The quorum of the board is present. If you are not speaking, if you could mute yourself, that would be great. State Board of Education regular meeting of October 12, 2021 is called to order. Maryland, are there individuals who wish to address the board during today's meeting?
There are individuals, both in person and online. I'll review the rules. Each speaker will be limited to...
I'm still hearing it echo.
I am too. I'm wondering if it's your computer.
I'll keep, I'll just roll through it. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes to address the board, and I will keep track of time. We will be strictly following the time limits so that everyone has an opportunity to speak. It's the practice of the board not to respond to comments during the public participation portion of the meeting. We will maintain an atmosphere of respect for all people, and those disrespecting anyone by name or otherwise will be asked to cease. We will begin public comment with the people in the room, followed by those joining us virtually. So I will tell you who's first, and I will tell you who's on deck. Jennifer Wertz will be our first speaker. And Ms. Wertz, if you can come to the end of the table. Is Ms. Wertz here? From Quincy? Okay. Moving on. Deborah Henning is our next speaker. And she will be followed by Linda Dornboss.
Can you just pass this far?
Sure. Yes, if you have materials you want to share, if you just give them to the person closest to you, we're happy to pass them around the table. Thank you. So whenever you're ready, we're ready.
Okay. Good afternoon. My name is Deborah Henning. I'm a retired teacher. I've taught in kindergarten to college classrooms in Michigan, Illinois, and Iowa. And I'm here today to express my concern about the sale of charter school properties by National Heritage Academies. Very briefly, NHA has created a nonprofit along with its real estate investment company. The nonprofit Campus Partners Fund will be the intended buyer. The sale is being financed by the industrial authority, Industrial Development Authority of La Paz County in Arizona, which is issuing $853.6 million in municipal bonds. The sale does two things for NHA. It enables them to cash out their profits in these buildings. At the same time, it allows their charter schools to remain eligible for federal funding should President Biden hold, keep his promise of stopping federal funding for for-profit charter schools. At the same time, it comes at a great cost to taxpayers. And I think it's easier to understand if you look at, if you understand the cost by looking at the cost of just one building. So if you see your, on your handout, you find the data for Legacy Charter Academy, which is located in Detroit and is authorized by Grand Valley State University. So to summarize, from the construction of that building in 1927 by the Detroit Public Schools, at a cost in today's dollars of $2.5 million. This mask is a problem. Until the sale of nineteen, the proposed sale price of $19 million has been repaid, taxpayers will have invested $37 million in that building. From the time it opened in 2010 until the end of 2021 school year, NHA collected $16 million in lease payments, taxes, maintenance. Add in the construction cost and the cost of repaying that, and it comes to an investment of taxpayer dollars of 37 million for a building that we do not own and will not own. At the same time, NHA will realize a profit of $23 million for the sale of it. It purchased the, the building for $600,000 in 2010, invested reportedly $6 million, and opened it in the fall of 2010. Between then and 2021, it received $11.5 million in lease... Wow. At least money alone. So I'm going to have to just cut it short and say, I'm going to send you another document. What I wanted to say was, it's, the cost is, you know, exorbitant, and it comes at a human cost where those kids only get, only 11% are proficient. So my suggestion is that we look at energy legislation, and that's a whole different thing. I thought we had five minutes, but, okay.
Thank you.
Anyway, so I will send you the information on the... Thank you.
Ms. Dornboss, Linda Dornboss, followed by Annie Whitlock.
Good afternoon. I'm Linda Dornboss, and I'm here as a board member representing the Michigan Council of Social Studies. We commit to providing social studies educational support to educators across the state. The purpose of social studies is to promote the knowledge, skills, and dispositions needed to make informed and reasoned decisions for the public good in a culturally diverse, complex democratic society. Senate Bill 460 and House Bill 5097 currently introduced in the Michigan Legislature violate the principles of democratic values educators are supposed to teach and subvert our goals in supporting these efforts. So we're asking that you make a public statement against these Senate Bill 460 and House Bill 5097, and do whatever else is in your power and influence so they do not move forward. First, these bills misconstrue the ever-so-popular term throwing around today, critical race theory, CRT. The Senate bill misinterprets CRT as something that's taught in schools, and when taught, it's anti-American. The House bill refers to instituting a core curriculum that does not include attitudes, beliefs, or value systems that are not essential in the structures of our society. However, CRT is a conceptual framework. It's a lens often used in higher education to, to better understand and interpret the impacts of systemic institutional racism so that we, the people, can discern and dismantle racism as we try to seek and make a more perfect union for all people. CRT is not a curriculum. It's not a set of lesson plans. It's not in the recently adopted K-12 social studies standards. And it's not anti-American and seeking to pit one race against another. Second, these bills threaten local control of educational curriculum and limit teachers' right to academic freedom. The Senate bill proposes restricting classroom resources such as the 1619 Project, which is a well-researched resource that could be used to teach the slavery, about slavery, race, and racism. Similarly, the House bill advocates for a core curriculum that does not teach about race, gender stereotyping, or implicit biases. In doing so, these bills are really limiting educators, educators' freedom to use professional judgment, discredit the professionalism of these educators, insert influence in the classroom that are not in the best interest of our students, and, above all, undermine the very Michigan Educational Code of Ethics that was revised and approved in 2019. So therefore, once again, we just urge you to make a public statement against Senate Bill 460 and House Bill 5097. Do whatever else is in your power and influence so that they not move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Annie Whitlock, and she will be followed by Jennifer Smith.
Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Annie Whitlock, and I'm here also representing the Michigan Council for the Social Studies, along with my colleague, Dr. Dornboss. MCSS is the largest group of social studies educators in the state. I'm here to encourage this board to speak out against two bills currently in the Michigan Legislature, Senate Bill 460 and House Bill 5097, that violate the principles of democratic values and subvert our goals as an organization committed to providing social studies educational support to teachers. There are many misconceptions, misinformation, and direct attacks on social studies education within these bills. My colleague mentioned several of them. These bills evoke a false alarm, a manufactured crisis about critical race theory in order to ban the teaching of race, racism, white supremacy, equity, justice, and even social emotional learning, as well as to limit the teaching of content such as slavery, Black history, women's suffrage, and civil rights. This is troubling for the future of social studies education. For example, Senate Bill 460 proposes restricting classroom use of the 1619 Project, which is a resource that could be used to teach about slavery. Similarly, House Bill 5097 bans teaching that race and gender is a better predictor of outcome than character, worth, work ethic, or skills. This is essentially banning the teaching that white supremacy and sexism even exist. These components limit educators' freedom to use professional judgment to determine which curricular materials work best for their students, and is in contradiction to the Michigan K-12 social studies content standards approved by this very board. Attempts by politicians to discredit the professionalism of social studies educators and exert influence in classrooms contradicts and undermines the Michigan Educational Code of Ethics, accepted by educators as their professional rights and responsibilities. During your August 11th meeting, Dr. Rice gave statements supporting educators in their teaching of accurate and hard history. MCSS has publicly affirmed these statements and stand in full agreement of them. Dr. Rice, you referenced that critical race theory is, quote, "not a curricular issue", and that race and racism should most assuredly be a part of a comprehensive social studies curriculum, and that educators have not just the right, but the responsibility to teach the breadth of our history. However, your statements do not address these bills specifically, even though your remarks are in direct opposition to the content of them. This can be confusing for educators if these bills pass. How can we have education laws that our state superintendent doesn't recommend, but also doesn't directly condemn? MCSS supports social studies education that prepares students to be informed, active participants in our democracy. This must include teaching and learning that allows for the free flow of ideas, recognizes the importance of teaching about race, racism, and discrimination, involves the analysis of issues, topics, and challenges from multiple perspectives, and embraces civic discourse of complicated truth. These bills seek to ban what we know to be what is quality education for students in Michigan, and MCSS is encouraging this board to speak publicly against these bills and exert any influence this body may have to ensure that these bills do not pass or even come to a vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jennifer Smith. She will be followed by Sandy Cooney.
Hi, board. My name is Jennifer Smith. I'm from Brighton, Michigan. I have three children in the district in various levels of education there. First, I wasn't planning on making this statement, but I implore you to actually advance Senate Bill 460 and House Bill 5097 because I do not think that critical race theory or anything the last two women had to say belong in my child's education. And considering that they're sent here from some business to purport business, I'm here to support my children's education. So, no, I don't think you should consider their argument. I think you should consider the argument of parents. And with that, I'd like to read you a written statement. "The announcement from the Justice Department on October 5th outwardly threatens parents with FBI investigation for legal assembly at school board meetings. The school board meeting is the place where parental defense against unconstitutional mandates, quarantines, and the forceful indoctrination of our children, CRT, is brought to the surface. As parents, we take the Attorney General's public stance as a blatant threat. Some parents are enraged further, while others are terrified. Collectively, across our county, we have protested, held peaceful rallies, had mass emailing campaigns to local elected officials, shown up in large numbers all across our county, and yet our concerns are fallen upon deaf ears from the elected officials. We had hoped through our efforts, the forceful illegal quarantines would cease to exist. Daily, parents share with us, within our group, their frustrations, the toll of illegal quarantines have taken on their kids' mental health, what they are missing out on when they're home, lost time of education, which is illegal, lost time out of work by parents in trying to navigate a situation that psychically has no end. We ask you to be stewards of their education and take a stand on the side of justice in parents and students. Stop these illegal quarantines. You have this authorization. Do what is right. Educate these kids." Now, I'm just going to make an off-the, off-the-cuff statement, and that is simply that with the previous commenters, I have three young men being educated in the public school system, and every single thing that these women are in support of would consider that my, my mixed children would all be racist. So how am I suppo... Out of order...
Excuse me, excuse me. If we could let the, the speaker speak, please.
My three white children, who are actually of mixed ethnicity, would all be considered racist. How am I, as a parent, supposed to raise my kids in a school district that's going to teach them that they're racist? This is insane. And these people shouldn't be allowed to speak in a Board of Education meeting.
Our next speaker is Sandy Cooney, followed by Connie Robinson.
Hi, I'm Sandy Cooney. I'm from Howell, Michigan. I have a 25-year-old daughter that graduated from Howell Schools, and I graduated from Howell Schools. And I currently have nine-year-old twins in that school district. My oldest child is a white female in a relationship with a Black female, and I love them completely. And my family comes from many backgrounds, many genders, many, many social classes, many, many things. And I do have mixed feelings, you know, with the CTR, and it's... And maybe I need to be educated a little more on it. And maybe we need to treat people, teach people how to love and respect one another instead of tear down or shame or put, put down anything. Because in my family, we teach love. We, we don't teach gender. We don't teach, we don't teach race. We don't, my children love everybody as if they were the same shade. And I am fearful, my twins are boy-girl, and I am fearful for them to be in school. For the very first time in my life, I have fears of my children going to school. And maybe that's what other genders have experienced. I have, I have no idea. But now my fears are of the mandates, the quarantines, the, the vaccines, the masking. My, my twins regressed into autism. My daughter quit making eye contact. And masks, what that does to a special needs child is crazy. Like, I had to get in my daughter's face and look her in the mirror just so she could see me because she was in her own little world. I had to get down in her face and make her see my eyes, make her see my mouth, bring her back to me. And how can these children do this? How can special needs children do this in an education field where people are supposed to be teaching them with masks on their face? I mean, I understand that we, we are worried about public health, but we have to do better for our special needs kids and diverse kids and everything. They're, everybody affected by these quarantines, by these masks, by these mandates. Parents need to have a voice. We need to make the choice. We, it should be up to us whether or not we want to vaccinate our kids, whether or not we want to mask our kids, whether or not we want our children to learn a certain thing. This should be our choice and our responsibility. Yes, we should teach everybody to love, respect, and be more courteous and empathetic to other people's ways of life. But parents should have the overall say on what, what happens to our children. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Connie Robinson. And then Jennifer Wertz, if she has returned... Oh, you're here. Okay, good.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I live in Heartland, and I'd like to talk on CRT. When concerned parents and grandparents started showing up at school board meetings a year ago to object to CRT, they were told CRT was not being taught in the school. It's not in the curriculum. Superintendents, principals, and school board members are all in lockstep, and the talking point is critical race theory is a complex legal theory that most people won't encounter until college or graduate school. Don't you find it curious that at the same time parents are being told there is no CRT, the Attorney General issues a memo categorizing concerned parents as domestic terrorists? A memo that instructs school board members to report threats by parents? Keep in mind that the word threat is not defined, is telling a school board member they will be voted out of office a threat? This same memo gives authority to the FBI to harass and even arrest parents? Why all the fuss if there's no CRT in our schools? The fact is, the National School Board Association petitioned the president to act against parents. The fact is, over the summer, the NEA publicly endorsed CRT and pledged, pledged to bring it to all 50 states, to all 14,000 local school districts. The time for denying CRT is past. The truth is CRT is here, and it's under the umbrella also of programs like DEI and IBT. The truth is that hundreds of consulting firms are making a fortune presenting this poison in our schools. It is now an $8 billion industry. Renowned speaker and president, president of Resiliency Consulting, Horatio Sanchez, was in Brighton just yesterday presenting IBT to teachers. Three hours, $5,000, 1,800 bucks an hour. Not bad. We are told that this kind of training will better equip teachers to meet student needs, this IBT training. But when you take a close look at the material Sanchez presented to district-wide superintendents in Livingston County, there is cause for concern. One source cited by Sanchez many times is Dr. Drew Weston. Dr. Weston is not only esteemed, an esteemed research professor, turns out he's an advocate for the Democratic Party. His publications include Democrat Should Steer Clear of Defunding the Police and his current book, The Political Brain. There are many other troubling politically tied sources cited in Sanchez's presentation. I fail to see how politics are helping to meet the needs of students. Another truth is there are now hundreds of CRT advocacy groups that are organizing, providing CRT proponents with talking points and toolkits for political action. The question is, these groups, we, Power Policy, and others repetitively talk about complete transformation and promote abolishment of the current economic and school systems. The question is, what will be the replacement? You are voted into office and are entrusted to make sound policies that promote the welfare of our children. I implore you to make a public stand against CRT and advocate, advocate for Senate Bill 460 and House Bill 5097. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ma'am, can I ask you just one question? You used an acronym, IBT.
Implicit bias training.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Jennifer Wertz is our next speaker. Do we get five minutes?
I thought it was five. It says five in the green sheet that you handed out earlier.
When there are several people that want to make comments, it can go down to three minutes.
Okay. Do I get longer because I'm representing an organization? Do I get five minutes?
If there's a group of people physically here with you, and you all were going to offer public comment, then if there was, so if there's like more than three, then you would get 10 minutes to have a spokesperson represent your group. So you personally get three minutes.
Okay. Well, I will try to squeeze this in. Good afternoon. My name is Jennifer Wertz. I'm with Moms for Liberty of Branch County and also representing Hillsdale County. In just a few months, a short month, we have gained over 250 members in our organization. According to Merrick Garland and NASBA and Michigan's own MEA President, Paula Herbert, I am a threat to you. I'm here to bully and intimidate you. Do I look like that kind of person? If you want to know the truth, I have no criminal record. None, except a traffic ticket here or there. According to Paula Herbert's words, though, I'm, I'm here to intimidate and bully you. Just so you know, I'm not here today to do that. I'm here to bring up some basic points. One, you are taking away parents' rights. It is our job to raise and educate our children, not you, and not the schools, and not early education. I was stunned this morning when I heard the reports from the early education people, honestly. Why don't we look at ways that we can help moms stay home and raise their children instead of funding programs that put two-year-olds in masks all day long and control them? How are your programs working? The education program that was requested in the second part of your morning was that we bring the standard from 34% to 17% because there's such a gap in it, and you'll lose funding otherwise. So how's this program working out? It's not just COVID that's made it bad. It's the policies and the systems that this state has put in place for decades. You're preventing children from being children. Statistics show children need playtime and unstructured, unstructured learning. Charlotte Mason, one of the most successful teachers in history, said, "Of the evils of modern education, few are worse than this, that the perpetual crackle of these, of his elders leaves the poor child not a moment of time nor an inch of space wherein to wander and grow." That's the state of the education system that we're facing today. I'll skip to the end. I close in a question. What are the things we're guaranteed of in this life? Death, taxes? That's about it, isn't it? Your policies against COVID and the control that you're manning on children is doing nothing. We are all guaranteed to die on this earth. 1 Peter 7:19 says, "Remember, it's better to suffer for doing good than to, than it is, than to suffer for doing wrong. Christ suffered for our sins once for all time. He never sinned, but He died for sinners to bring you safely home to God. He suffered physical death, but was raised to life in the Spirit." Simply put, we're all going to die someday. My hope is in the Lord, and I know where I'm going after, after I die. I hope the rest of you do. And I hope you will stop controlling children and allow us as parents to parent. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay. Now we are going to, I have information that we have a virtual speaker. Mike, if you could please admit Chris Rosen into the room.
We don't have any participants.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Rosen must have changed his mind. That concludes public participation.
Board members, the next item on the committee of the whole agenda is the presentation of the proposed standards for the preparation of middle grades and high school science teachers. This is a presentation on proposed teacher preparation standards for middle schools, high school science teachers. These standards would replace Michigan's current preparation standards for teachers in the areas of integrated science, biology, chemistry, earth and space science, physical science, and physics. Following a period of public comment, there will be a request for board approval during the February 8, 2022 board meeting. Presenters today are Dr. Delsa Chapman, Deputy Superintendent of Educator, Student, and School Support; Ms. Leah Breen, Director of the Office of Educator Excellence; Dr. Sean Katke, Education Consultant Manager in the Office of Educator Excellence; and Ms. Darcy McMahon, Higher Education Consultant in the Office of Educator Excellence. There will be a PowerPoint presentation. Presenters, good afternoon. Welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. Good afternoon, President Olbridge, and fellow board members. Yes, we are here today representing the Office of Educator Excellence, and we are very happy and excited to provide the proposed standards for the preparation of middle grades and high school science teachers. And we will have a brief introduction by Director Breen, and then we'll turn it over to our consultants.
Thank you all for the opportunity to be here and share this information with you, and just want to express a thanks to Sean and Darcy, who put in work very hard on developing new standards in alignment with our new grade bands for our certificate structure. So with that, I'll turn it over to you two for the presentation.
Excellent. Thank you very much. It's a privilege to be here with you again. And Darcy was our lead consultant for, for this work, so she will be taking the bulk of the presentation. Take it away.
Thank you. Good day, and thank you for including this work on the agenda today. We are here to share with you the proposed revised standards for preparing teachers of middle grades and high school science. There are many reasons why teacher preparation standards for science were determined to be the next critical step in our revision process, as you can see on the slide. This work is part of an ongoing process that began with revision of the certification structure into grade bands. Important MDE initiatives such as understanding and meeting the needs of the whole child...
Important MDE initiatives such as understanding and meeting the needs of the whole child, a focus on equity, and Goal 7 of the Michigan Strategic Education Plan also drive a need to revise these standards in line with these goals and initiatives. Finally, the current standards are almost 20 years old, and Michigan K-12 science standards and the NSTA teacher preparation standards have both been updated in that 20-year window. A subcommittee of the stakeholders developed the structure for science endorsements based on consideration of the Certification Structure Committee recommendations, alignment with MDE initiatives and goals, and reviewing input from across the state. For each grade band, all teachers who are prepared to teach science will earn a science endorsement. These endorsements can then be paired with an additional optional endorsement in a science sub-discipline. Multiple perspectives were represented by 36 stakeholders, represented by the blue pins on the diagram, who directly contributed, including PK-12 science curriculum instruction leaders, professional education organization representatives, educator preparation faculty and science content faculty, teachers, multiple geographic regions, and all types of districts and institutions. There were also 33 reviewers across Michigan, represented by the red pins. These reviewers came from all across the state, including the Upper Peninsula, and even included five science leaders from other states. So there were 36 stakeholders, 33 reviewers, for a total of 69 educators directly involved in developing these proposed standards. After review of the current teacher preparation standards, current national standards, and current Michigan K-12 standards, the committee unanimously decided to develop new standards for the Michigan teacher preparation in science that would align with the National Science Teacher Association's teacher preparation standards, Michigan's K-12 science standards, and MDE initiatives. These stakeholders deemed the current Michigan teacher preparation standards insufficient and opted for drafting new standards incorporating key ideas from multiple sources, as detailed in the introductory remarks on page 5 of the board packet. Stakeholders were convened in the fall of 2019 and began a review of standards documents and MDE goals and initiatives. The stakeholder group began drafting a framework for the standards for all endorsements by January 2020 and met roughly twice monthly through the summer of 2021, meaning virtually through the pandemic. Most stakeholders were part of multiple writing teams, including a steering team and sub-disciplinary content teams. Some of the key milestones of the process are highlighted on the slide. Draft standards were completed during the spring and summer of 2021 and shared with external reviewers for feedback. This feedback was incorporated and resulted in the proposed standards you have here today. The stakeholder committee worked to ensure that the proposed middle grades and high school science teacher preparation standards are phenomenon-centered and three-dimensional, which means teacher candidates would engage in investigation of phenomena through sense-making and solving problems in order to learn science. This is in order to prepare candidates to teach the three dimensions of the K-12 Michigan science standards, including to develop student understanding of disciplinary core ideas by engaging in science and engineering practices and application of cross-cutting concepts. Students-first framing, which meant that K-12 student needs were prioritized over adult needs or programmatic needs in developing these standards. As a result, the proposed standards prepare science teachers to meet the needs of the whole child, are equity-focused, ensuring access to quality science instruction and opportunity, represent a student-centered paradigm for instruction, enable candidates to connect science learning to student experiences, interests, and identity, and promote equitable participation for all learners. The standards are written as action-based, practice-based, performance objectives. As a result of intentional integration of MDE core teaching practices, which means that the candidates must apply knowledge and skill within context. The proposed standards are also consistent in format and rigor across integrated and specialization areas, and they maintain strong science content through alignment with the Michigan K-12 science standards. They have a finely honed focus on the content understanding needed to teach science. Finally, these standards embed reflective teacher practice and assessment literacy. Candidates experience learning science in ways suggested by K-12 standards. They will be adept at collecting, analyzing, and providing evidence of student learning, and reflecting on students' understanding and the cultural aspects of science and science The committee's steering team worked to develop a framework that was parallel in structure to the three dimensions of the Michigan K-12 science standards. Three facets of preparing science teachers were defined: the science teaching practices, core knowledge for teaching science, and guiding principles for teaching science. The framework is built around these three facets, which include eight science teaching practices, six domains of core knowledge for teaching science, and six guiding principles for teaching science. Each of these is defined and broken down into elements in the framework, which can be seen in Attachment E, starting on page 44 of the board packet. These elements of the facets became the foundational building blocks to develop the three-faceted performance objectives that became the standards you have today. The six domains of core knowledge, which are aligned with the National Science Teachers' Association teacher preparation standards, became the domains of the proposed standards. Standard 6.5, the last standard for the science endorsement, found on page 17 of the board packet, has been expanded to include driving questions for each science sub-discipline that describe what well-prepared beginners will need to know and be able to do with each of the disciplinary core ideas identified in the sub-disciplines of science to teach that content. The driving questions were built from NSTA content questions to engage candidates in explaining phenomena or solving problems. They have a direct alignment to the K-12 science standards. They focus on deep, flexible conceptual understanding needed by teachers to teach the content, and they have a goal of engaging teacher candidates in learning content through engaging in science and engineering practices and building cross-cutting concepts. Each optional disciplinary specialization also contains driving questions. These driving questions for each optional endorsement were built and modeled from sub-disciplinary questions described in the last slide to prepare teachers to teach beyond the standards for that grade band. These standards are intended to prepare middle grades candidates to teach initial high school content to ninth-grade students, and high school teacher candidates to be prepared to teach courses beyond the Michigan science standards, such as honors, AP, or IB courses in that sub-discipline. The intent of these is also to engage teacher candidates in learning content by enacting science and engineering practices and building cross-cutting concepts. There are several shifts represented in the proposed standards. First, they are practice-based. The proposed standards integrate both science and engineering practices and core teaching practices. They are equity and whole-child focused. They infuse equity and whole-child principles throughout. In the facets, there are elements woven throughout. In the guiding principles, two for equity and one for whole child. Science teaching practices include equity throughout, and core knowledge has all domains, both whole child and equity throughout. Third, they are three-faceted to align with three-dimensional standards. The three facets of the proposed standards, science teaching practices, core knowledge for teaching science, and guiding principles for science teaching, are intended to mirror the three dimensions of the K-12 Michigan science standards, which include science and engineering practices, disciplinary core ideas, and cross-cutting concepts. Because research shows that teachers teach the way they have been taught, the three-faceted, this three-faceted approach is intended to enable programs to provide three-dimensional science learning experiences for candidates. Fourth, specialized content knowledge for teaching is directly aligned to the K-12 standard. This tight focus on the content needed for teaching helps ensure well-prepared beginners and enables programs to narrow the content scope to allow for expedient program completion. Some expected programmatic impacts of this include more consistency in preparation for all science teachers, and clear alignment of content and pedagogy to the Michigan K-12 After today's meeting, the proposed standards will be sent for statewide review and public comment, which will close on December 1st. The stakeholder committee will review and address the public comment feedback and make any changes before we bring the standards back for your approval in February. Following approval, we would then begin providing communication, support, and assistance for teacher preparation programs to introduce the standards and revise programs accordingly. Thank you, and please feel free to contact us with any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, presenters. Board members, any comments or questions for our presenters this afternoon? Mick Millen.
So sometimes standards make me a little nervous because if you're not, if you're not meeting the standards, does that mean you end up losing your job? Or is there anybody that has, you know, are these standards going to be imposed on anybody who currently has a job? They have to go back in order to keep their current job or anything like that?
Very good question. No, these are for new teacher preparation.
Okay.
If a current teacher would like to go back and get another endorsement in science, these are the standards that would govern their course of study. They wouldn't lose a certificate that they have or ability to teach something.
So a new endorsement, so their current certificate, would they not be allowed to teach in a certain discipline or band, or whatever you want to call it, after these are passed? You know, I mean...
No, they wouldn't lose, you would not lose the ability to be placed with what's on your current certificate.
So currently, if you hold a teaching certificate with a secondary English endorsement, you can teach English. After these are passed, you can still teach English. If you have a science endorsement, you can still teach science with that endorsement.
You grandfathered in to what your certificate says.
So if their certificate, okay, but so somebody can't teach biology in high school unless they have some kind of a band or a specialization? Is that right?
They need a biology endorsement.
Currently?
Yes.
Okay. So they could be, they may have a chemistry and a physics, but they'd have to go back and get a biology additional classes or something in order to teach biology in high school?
If I could, I think there is some confusion about what is versus what would be under the new standards. And if you would be kind enough to share, again, the current versus the proposed.
Sure.
Because I think it's important, I think that there's a reversal here. I think we need to back up and make sure that we've got clarity about knowledge.
So if I, to speak current practice, somebody who would, to teach biology, would need either an integrated science, so a broad science endorsement, or a specialization biology.
Okay.
And so if somebody had, say, physics and chemistry, they would need to go back and get...
Currently.
Yeah, currently, a biology or, and we like to, we really like to promote the integrated science because that gets you all the things that you could teach. Under this new structure, and Darcy, do you want to explain the new structure, how it will work?
Yeah, absolutely. All candidates in the future who would like to teach science, either at the middle grades grade band or the high school grade band, will get a science endorsement first. So every science teacher will have a science endorsement. And then if they would like to, they could add a specialization in chemistry or biology on top of that. The specializations will particularly help prepare those teachers for something beyond what our K-12 standards do in that grade band. So for example, for example, a high school science teacher would have the science endorsement, and if they wanted to add a biology endorsement, that would well prepare them then to teach an honors biology or an anatomy and physiology course, or an IB course, or something similar.
Okay. So when I look at a question, organic chemistry on page 29, how do models explain how the atoms from glucose molecules combine with other elements to form more complex organic molecules? So is this, this needs to be here or else, is this instructing the college programs what they need to make sure they cover?
Yes, exactly.
And that's something that's not in the current state standards?
The current state standards were more general in the content approach.
Okay.
And they would name things like cells. And so this is very much more specifically aligned to, in order to teach what our K-12-approved Michigan science standards are, this is what a teacher needs to know well.
Okay. And this would inform the programs what they need to make sure they cover?
Exactly right, yeah.
And I guess this is where, I remember back when I was in the legislature, there were bills from time to time that would say, you know, they would kind of ridicule current standards because Einstein wouldn't be able to teach physics because he hasn't gotten, you know, he didn't pay the special interests or the cronyism of, you know, whatever college that all these people that are on here really have a vested interest in making sure that people have to go back to their college and get their product or else they can't teach. So I guess that's kind of what I'm wondering is, you know, somebody with a physics or a chemistry degree and they're teaching, it's, they may spend thousands of hours on biology, but because they don't have that piece of paper and haven't paid a particular college to make sure that they continue to make money, they don't get to teach, even though they may be experts in their field. I guess. Okay, that, and then, you know, since this is science, I mean, is there a standard in here that talks about the fact that settled science, quote-unquote, often is wrong, and that you should be questioning settled, you know, quote-unquote, settled science? That is part of science is kind of...
Yes.
Making sure that we don't just sit and what we, you know, what we know often changes.
I think you would probably be especially interested in looking at the framework at the back of the document.
Okay.
That describes the nature of science aspects in the core knowledge for teaching area in particular.
Okay.
And those have been woven throughout the regular science standards as well, that nature of science and that healthy skepticism and supporting those arguments from evidence.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So if I could, the context within which we offer these proposed standards is a teacher shortage, a teacher shortage which is substantial in science, which has been substantial in science for many years. And so the number of people getting those very, very specific granular degree programs has waned over a period of time in favor for the integrated, in favor of the integrated science programs. What we are saying is, we're not abandoning the former programs, the biology, the chemistry, the physics, and, 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 but rather we're acknowledging a direction in the field, a direction by the way of the customers, that is to say, the people pursuing these degrees toward integrated science, we're giving them the opportunity to stack endorsements on top of that generalized credential. But the value of the generalized credential, for those of us, Dr. Pritchett, like you, who have had the opportunity, the privilege, the responsibility of running a high school and trying to staff that high school, is that you don't have to find someone who is the unique biology-certified individual, Dr. Chapman, the unique chemistry-certified individual, the unique physics-certified individual, and so on and so forth, but rather you can take a person who is certified with an integrated science certi- you can take a person who is certified with an integrated science certificate and use him or her in any of those, and perhaps he or she has a, an endorsement on top of, which makes him or her uniquely qualified or more uniquely qualified to teach one of those sciences, and you would favor him or her in that, in that class distribution. But it provides a lot more flexibility at a time when we're struggling to hire science teachers. But the, but the importance is, is that when you go to this generalist endorsement, this generalist certificate, rather, you have to make clear what it stands for, where else you run the risk of Michael Rice teaching high school physics. Or for that matter, any other science in, in high school. Yeah. Other, other comments or questions from board members?
Well, I guess, since you brought up teacher shortages, I mean, really, it's, it's more of a self-imposed problem. You know, from what I understand, you know, there's really not, there's not a merit-based pay, there's all these hurdles and endorsements that's required, you know, it's, we call it barriers to entry, and I, you see that a lot where people can't, if they wanted to, like I said, I know Einstein might not be a good teacher, but if you have somebody who was, somebody who could, could convince a school district that, you know, I don't necessarily have everything, but I'm an expert in this field and I have, these are the things that I've done that I think would make me a good teacher, they can't, they couldn't be, they couldn't hire them unless they, you know, jumped through these hoops and paid their, paid their dues to the, to the higher ed. And then there's the lack of merit-based, so the incentives aren't there. So I mean, it's really a self-imposed teacher shortage. A lost subject, but you brought up teacher shortage.
Yeah, no, and I think that's, I think that's legitimate. Just, just a couple of things. When the teacher shortage was constrained to particular fields, I believe that there was a value to additional pay in shortage areas. But those, those determinations are done district by district in collective bargaining. They're not determined by the state legislature, they're not determined by the state Board of Education, the State Department of Education, Superintendent of Public Instruction. So I agree with you, when those shortage areas were constrained and when they hadn't metastasized to the entire profession, then I agree that there was a value to that. I'm a little bit at a loss when you've got shortage areas across the profession, how you determine which shortages are more acute than, than others. To your other question about barriers to entry, we are trying to reduce barriers to entry now. And there are a number of barriers to entry in the, in the state and in the country. They do require measure of scrutiny. They do require, in some cases, not all, some rethinking. So for example, we've got very tight certification requirements in special education in this state. And they are, they're siloed certification requirements. A number of us have talked about, and we've actively considered, the possibility of fewer of those. Not more, but fewer. And that's a reduction, if you will, of a barrier to entry. So I agree that this is an area that we need to scrutinize, but remember, one person's barrier to entry is another person's assurance of quality. And, and so I think that there are two things that are being reflected upon here. And a number of people, including our Michigan Teacher of the Year, Ms. Porter, might argue that her teacher ed program helped prepare her to be an outstanding teacher. It wasn't incidental to her career, it was integral to her career. So I just share that with you. Other board members reflections? Hearing and seeing none is 1:48. Presenters, we appreciate it. We look forward to seeing what we get in public comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And speaking of the Michigan Teacher of the Year, Ms. Leah Porter, the 2021, 2022 Michigan Teacher of the Year, will present her report. Ms. Porter is a third-grade teacher at Wilcox Elementary School in Holt Public Schools, a new third-grade teacher after many years as a kindergarten teacher. Ms. Casey Hook, Region 2 Teacher of the Year from Roscommon Area Public Schools is joining us. Ms. Hook teaches 6th and 7th grade students in Roscommon Middle School. Teachers, welcome. It is great to have you here in person, albeit behind masks.
Good afternoon, thank you, board. As always, I so enjoy my days getting to spend with you here. I'm settling in fairly well to this role. It's been quite an adjustment on many different levels, but have started to kind of build some of the work I'm hoping to do this year. One exciting thing I got to do last week was I was the keynote speaker at the teacher preparation conference at CMU and got to spend two different afternoons doing live Q and A's with teacher candidates that are coming up. And I have to tell you that it was very inspiring and brought me tremendous hope for the future of education. They were really flinging some very challenging questions at me. We had some wonderful critical thinking and really understanding the realities of education today, and it was just an amazing experience. So today, I am very proud to be with Ms. Casey Hook, Region 2 Teacher of the Year from Roscommon Middle School. And we are going to be presenting collaboratively today on social-emotional learning specifically around relationships. My hope is, is each month when I have a regional teacher here with me, that we will be able to collaborate on a presentation together in a passion area that both myself and that regional teacher shares. So before we begin that, I'm gonna take it over and let Casey take over and tell her, you all, a little bit about herself.
Hi, everyone. I'm a little nervous. I am very used to talking to students, but being around a bunch of adults and presenting sometimes gives me some jitters. So yes, my name is Casey Hook. I am only six years in the education field, so I am very close with teacher education programs and coming out of that and getting to see everything that's going on there and how that affects my day-to-day life. So just a little bit about me, I am the youngest of four children. I was born and raised in Williamson, Michigan, not too far from here, so I'm very familiar with the area, and went through K-12 Williamson Community Schools. You would say that I have an education gene in my family, as six of the seven of us have had a job in education at some point in time. So my mother started us off, and when my dad retired from business, he actually went back and was a, worked at Ingom ISD through the Career Technical Program in that field. So it is awesome. I have my husband up there with my four pets. That is my created family. He has helped me in a way of education did not suit him. He was kind of the outlier. So he has helped me reach students that are different from me. Leah and I have talked a lot about how, as teachers, we teach how we were taught, and he did not always have that great experience, so I really use him as a sounding board to help as well. Moving on to my education, as I said, I went through Williamson K-12. I was very immersed in the community there. They helped me develop my love for learning. I love Williamson Community Schools. The teachers I still am in contact with to this day, my 4-5 looping teacher is the reason, one of the reasons, other than my mother, why I became an educator. And she helped develop my love of learning and provided me insights and opportunities to showcase my unique passions and talents, which led me to finding Saginaw Valley State University, where my love of learning flourished. And the teachers there, and my professors there, especially in my teacher ed program, helped me kind of develop how to teach my love of learning to our next generation. I was also able to join a sorority where I had tons of leadership within philanthropy and vice presidency of membership education, public relations, and recruitment, and working specifically with Special Olympics and Girls on the Run. Moving on to my career now, I have, I now work at Roscommon Area Public Schools, specifically in Roscommon Middle School. I have had tons of opportunities for leadership within RMS, brought through not only the fellow teachers in my district, but also through my administration. I was blessed to be able to loop with my 7th graders since 4th grade. So I have been blessed to be with them the entire time in middle school. And leaving, they were like, Mrs. Hook, why do you have to be gone again? Like, they're, they don't like when I'm gone, so, but they, they're loving that I have this opportunity today. And one of the pictures there with my team teacher, I was allowed to team teach English right before the pandemic hit two years ago, and that was an incredible opportunity, as well as really being able to be on the district level of systematic reconfiguration with urgency and a whole-child approach, which really goes into what we're going to speak on today. All right, so this is a quote from Eric Johnson, which is, "A ton of work my district has done with motivating and engaging students within poverty." So the quote up there really just talks about how students have positive relations, who have positive relationships with teachers, they will experience less stress, they have better behaviors and are more excited about learning. They also normally work harder. And I think it just goes back to the fact that, as human beings, we are inherently social and we look out to build connections, and that connection to each other also helps build on with motivation.
So in getting to know Casey over the last few months, she and I both have a deep passion for relationships for students and believe that is the foundation of all that we do in the classroom. So through our discussions, we wanted to just kind of share what we thought our philosophy of relationships was in, in reaching our students. And I don't usually read off of a slide, but I just want to read it so everybody really just kind of hears, you know, where our passion lies in this. So developing relationships with students is the essential foundation for teaching. Building a community of safety, connection, and trust allows students the space to take risks in their learning and a strive to achieve their greatest potential. So what Casey and I are going to do today is we are going to talk a little bit about the ways that we do that in our classroom and then how we bring a lens of equity to the concept of relationships as well and the impact it has on instruction and success in the classroom. So as you know, I just recently transitioned to 3rd grade. I feel like my whole mantra this year is expertise at the primary level and barely staying afloat as I am transitioning to 3rd grade. But one of the cornerstones for me in both a primary classroom and now in my 3rd grade classroom is really developing a connection and helping to teach and guide students in self-regulation in order to be able to build their efficacy in their learning. So the big piece of that is really getting to know your students and not, not just knowing their favorite color, these superficial pieces that are fun and engaging ways to, you know, do little, fast little games with students, but really knowing their interests, their families, their siblings, their learning personalities, taking a moment to look really deeply at them, and really kind of watching in the quiet moments the ways that they respond and work. That takes time to hone, but is an incredibly valuable tool in order to be able to develop relationships with kids, especially those that have learning challenges, behavioral challenges, social-emotional challenges, and the like. So the ways that you can establish those connections is by building different community activities. Those look very different at the primary level than they do when you go into an upper elementary classroom. So I'm going to speak a little bit about that transition for myself. Across my district, we are implementing the conscious discipline model for supporting students in terms of their social-emotional learning. And a big part of that is building in a morning meeting, which we had established for many years in our building, but like digging in a little bit deeper to help students understand how to self-regulate. And a big piece of that is that the teacher learns to be reflective and to model themselves how to handle challenging and difficult situations and also being vulnerable and being able to express frustrations and how to manage those and guide those discussions. So in my morning meeting format that I have built in my own classroom is we start with a unifying activity. That can be a phrase or a class motto that kids come up with, it can be a song that the class wants to do, but it's a way for us to kind of come together as our own community to start the day. We also acknowledge those that are with us with our Wish You Well board. There's a picture of that up there. All of our pictures are in, on magnets on our board, and when one of us is not there, we move that picture into that heart as a signifier that even though they're not with us, we wish them well and hope that they're well, and just keeping that community solid and that we are a classroom-community family. After we do those pieces, we always have some sort of calming activity. We teach kids how to do breathing strategies, we do yoga, that's one of my favorites. I was a dancer for many years, so I love integrating a movement as much as possible. And also mindfulness and how we can use these strategies in moments of frustration. I often, as you've probably already seen in my presentations to the board, really put my whole self out there, and I really like to show that to students when things are difficult or challenging, things that I'm working on, and how I can actually use those tools. Specifically, as we've been transitioning back into the classroom in a, I don't want to even, like, still in a pandemic, but in a more normal experience than what we had last year in our district, I've been talking a lot about how we develop ways to help ourselves when things are tough and how do we model those things and how, and really expressing those things and having kids be aware of them in order to help themselves. And the conversations that I've had with my students have just been beyond my imaginations at 3rd grade. I think maybe I'm just in awe too with working with kindergartners for so long that typically a question would be in response to tell me a story about something totally off the topic. But, and so they're really starting to be aware of things that might be challenging for them and how they can mitigate those things in the classroom with support from myself, themselves, and their community around them. We will do a connection activity where kids then get to share deeply about a question where they'll be able to connect with their classmates. And then we always end with a commitment strategy, thinking about something that we want to do, or I'm sorry, not a strategy, a statement, and something that we want to work on, so an "I will" statement. And a big piece of that is knowing that we can grow even something like, okay, I just want to work on this today because I'm having a real struggle here, or something that you might say that that's a commitment for the entire year. I was talking to my students a lot about my need to want to continue to, you know, move as quickly as possible, and I, you know, for me to slow down is such a big piece of, and still something I work to to this day, of I will take a moment and take a breath and slow down, and just owning the things that you're working on and then revisiting them. Sometimes they're community goals, sometimes they are individual goals that the kids will write down and they'll keep in a special place, and I will have a conversation with them about that and how they're doing with it and how I can support them in ways that we can support each other in that growth area. But that community meeting really fosters that idea that we are all in this together, that we have a classroom, that we can be honest, that we can take risks, and ultimately that these, this time each day enhances the education throughout the entire school day. Casey?
Yes, I was adding on to what Leah said, and I want to speak specifically about our district. So we, as I moved into Roscommon, I came from a charter school, and Roscommon is a small school district. We have one elementary school, one middle school, and one high school. And we saw a lot of great things happening in classrooms or in certain buildings that we wanted to be happening across our entire district. So we asked the SWIFT management team or the Calhoun ISD to come in with Blueprint, and we put in a lot of systems of change. We have used a lot of Castle's work, which ties into what Leah says about self-awareness and self-management, having those relationship skills, thinking about how we make decisions, and starting within that student, within that classroom community, within the building, the district, to that family and caregiver, and then our outreach community. We've provided systems with intense student support networks, including our restorative justice teams, our student support network district-wide, our student success teams at the elementary school and middle school, as well as having PBIS with building-wide expectations, behavior rubrics, and the student responsibility classroom. With some of these things, to talk more about the student success team, that is a way for teachers to advocate for their students, whether it's behaviorally or academically, and that could be even a student, a high-achieving student, and getting them into a class that is the most beneficial for them. And that goes back to having those systems in place to know how to build those relationships. And we've started to do that by integrating it into our instructional infrastructure. We have redesigned our units with understanding by design, using essential questions that tie back to that social-emotional learning, as well as making sure we're very specific or looking very actively toward those mentor texts, how we plan mini lessons, summative informative assessments, making sure that we are always keeping that academic point to the forefront, but tying in those relationships. We have something called True Success, which was started in Grand Rapids, and we use that within our homerooms. We have virtues monthly, starting with respect, responsibility, integrity, things like that where we have pre-built lessons, that we have videos, like from movies, from different YouTube stars that are talking about how to be respectful, what is responsible decision-making, what is integrity, and then talking about what that looks like within themselves, within our classroom, within our school, and even outside in our community. This is something that's done in every homeroom K-7, actually K-8, and it is an opportunity since we do it everywhere. If a student comes into my classroom from another homeroom, I can say, oh, well, what did we talk? oh, well, what did we talk about with respect today? How are we using that today within our classroom? Um, using them to build working agreements between teachers and students and setting forth that effort to always making sure that we are systematically doing this district-wide, um, because I can be in one classroom, I can only teach so many students. And unfortunately, we want to make sure that all students have this opportunity and all students have that chance to build a relationship and learn these very important skills.
So as I mentioned earlier, we were going to briefly speak about, um, our own experiences with developing relationships and the work that our districts are doing. And through Casey and my conversations, we talked a great deal about relationships and how it applies to equity. And she and I teach in very different districts in terms of our demographics. Whole public schools where I have taught for the last 16 years, our student population right now is, sits right around 40% of students that identify as non-white and that's fairly similarly mirrors the state of Michigan's demographics. So when we think about connecting and building relationships with students, uh, most teachers would say that it is easiest to build relationships with those that you can relate to and that you see in yourself. And that often, and Casey mentioned this earlier, teachers, uh, teach in ways themselves that they grew and flourished in their own classroom environments. And that self-reflective practice of knowing that that is not best for all students is really a lifelong journey for any classroom teacher of knowing that the way that you learn, the way that you connect could be different than those that are in front of you. So when I think about this, um, and I mentioned and I talked about Goldie Muhammad before in my presentation last, uh, month, but in her work Cultivating Genius, she talks about how it's necessary for teachers to do their own self-work in order to teach students to know themselves and others. And this means really being a reflective practitioner, that they can unpack their own history, their own identity, their biases, their assumptions, and, um, their, everything that they have brought into their experiences in the world and how to, um, help support, uh, not only their own understanding, but how to then look reflectively at their own classroom of students and see them as the amazing humans that they are. So part of that is that it is our responsibility. It's not just that it's something that we say to deeply know our students. And that might mean that depending on the demographic culture that you are servicing, that you know the students in front of you, that you understand the family dynamics, that you know the ways that they respond socially, that you understand their, the cultural dynamics that they have at home, that you know the holidays they celebrate and that you're not just mirroring the things that you have had in your own traditions and your own previous school experiences, but that you are really deeply knowing kids. And that is lifelong work. If I think about myself five years ago and then today, I know I have grown exponentially and I know that I will continue to look five years down the road and say, oh, my gosh, I could have been doing things so much better. And I think that's such a critical piece as an educator is to know that even when you try your best, maybe it's not always good enough, but you can always strive to continue to improve in that area. One of the pieces that I think is really important on top of all of that is the idea of that, um, being authentic and vulnerable. Kids know and understand human interactions and they know when you care and are authentic with them and then when you are not. And it is so critical in the development of a relationship with your classroom, no matter the number of kids you're servicing, that they know that you care and that you are authentic and vulnerable in your own feelings and your own emotions and your own ways of, um, combating classroom issues and behaviors and all the rest. It's just the most valuable piece that you can do in order to be able to help kids flourish, take risks, and know that they are in a safe environment to learn.
You're going to make me cry over here. Um, so my-
It wouldn't be the first time, Casey, there's no chance of here.
So, um, my district, like Leah said, is very different. Um, being in a rural commu-, community in northern Michigan, we do not have, uh, the diversity when it comes to ethnicity. However, 70%, a little more than 70% of Roscommon area public schools is on free or reduced lunch. Um, we have a very large percent of low socioeconomic status of students. And if you look into Eric Johnson's work at all, you will know what poverty and the effects that it has on the brain as well as stress and even just your physical health overall. Um, so when we talk about that, he really talks also about that engagement piece and his, all of his books and most of his research is all about relationships. Um, we think about the effects of poverty that start with emotional and social challenges. You have acute and chronic stress, cognitive lags, and health and safety issues. Um, students of poverty enter the school with crucial basic needs not met. And when someone, a, a child, even a person does not have that crucial basic need met, how are we as teachers expected to reach them academically? We first have to meet those basic needs and that comes through a relationship. So by building relationships and getting to know your students, teachers can provide some of those basic needs. Um, you can do this through safe and predictable, stable and welcoming environments within your classroom. You embody respect. Um, I think that's what Leah was touching on. We are authentic selves and we embody that first and foremost, I will respect you and I will respect that you are different than me and I will respect that however you come and enter the classroom, I'm going to make sure that we can function in a safe and healthy environment. Um, we provide empowering opportunities. Um, students in poverty need to have that sense of power and control. And so we need to be able to provide that through, in respectful, um, opportunities, providing choice. And at the end of the day, as Leah has said, we need to listen. We need to listen to our kids. Um, they know a lot more than I think we sometimes give them credit for. And the more that we listen, the more we show respect and the more we can embody that change. Um, within relationships, um, action steps to combat the many effects of poverty are not possible. Um, it's the responsibility of us as teachers to deeply study and know our students. Um, I got, I had the privilege to see, hear Manuel Scott speak, um, this summer and a quote that I took from him was, "Teachers must become a student of your students. Study them. Everything you see, everything you hear is symbolic. Study the symbols to get the deeper meaning of their being and then incorporate these new understandings into your teaching." At the end of the day, relationships are built to serve. And as teachers, we are here to serve our students. We can't do so academically if we do not first reach them socially and emotionally.
So just to finish up today, um, I just want to reiterate that, one, I'm very excited to see that on the strategic plan, talking about relationships and, and developing social emotional skills is on there. It's a high priority and I feel that for many years, that, that's not always been the push of districts or ISDs because it's been such a focus to like, get the curriculum, do the standards, you know, like pushing that so much, but it's just so important and viable. And the reality is, is that you're going to put the time in either way. Those that feel that they can't take the time to develop relationships are going to end up having to combat all kinds of behavior problems, emotional problems that they're going to be the time that it takes. Or you can take the time to slow down, get to know your kids and be able to have the relationships with them to connect when they're having struggling moments and know how to help support them best. So I, I hope that today, uh, you know, with us speaking about relationships and that social emotional learning, it's just like the smallest piece of the puzzle with our experiences. But I will say as a side note, that one of the most amazing components right now about being Michigan Teacher of the Year is getting to work with regional teachers across the state, getting to hear other perspectives, other places, other types of schools and the demographics they serve. And if all teachers could have the kinds of experiences that we are now starting to have this year, I can't even imagine the growth of learning that we could have in our profession. So I just wanted to share that, that this opportunity on top of just getting to be here with you each day, that getting to work so closely with a regional teacher each month in this capacity has been just such a wonderful gift and I'm very excited to continue to share work with you each month with other regional teachers. So Casey, anything else?
No. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Uh, if we could hold us, I could hold us, let's go, let's, let's see if we have anything from the, uh-
Yeah, I just wanted to get out of the hot seat.
You don't get off that quickly. Uh, thank you for your presentation. Board members, any reflections? I do, but I defer to board first. Okay, hearing done. Um, terrific presentation, I appreciate it. So you, you were leaning into, um, the social and emotional learning and, um, you were reflecting particularly on a couple of the elements of social and emotional learning. You, um, um, you use the term self-regulation. It's often referred to as self-management, um, which is something that, that little ones work on. It's something that, that as you reflected, uh, big ones work on it too. Um, the issue of understanding oneself. It doesn't just happen, i- it's a process. Um, sometimes that's referred to in the, the, the five competencies, social and emotional learning competencies as self-awareness. So we talk about in the five social and emotional learning competencies, we talk about self-awareness, awareness of others, self-management, relationship to others, and then decision-making. And you were really leaning into those, those two self-pieces. You know, your, your, your sense of self, your, your understanding of yourself as a, as a prelude to managing yourself, to, um, better, better, um, navigating one's world. And you, in role modeling, the, the issue of being genuine and vulnerable, noted that, you know, sometimes you overextend yourself and, and just sort of reflecting upon what are the, what's the evidence of that? And, and then what do I do to address that? Now, you're going to be dealing with this your whole life. You, you know, you don't just magically, um, I mean, that's kind of hardwired in you. But you can recognize when, you know, perhaps you haven't gotten enough sleep, you haven't gotten enough food, you haven't gotten the right food, you haven't gotten exercise, you haven't done any movement, you haven't gotten up, and, and, and. And in doing that and in being honest about it, you can better lead your kids too. Because you can say, look, this is something that Ms. Porter struggles with and, um, that I work on, on a regular basis. And, and children absolutely, um, see whether you're, whether you're real or not. Uh, they're, they're watching us, they're determining whether there's something legitimate about, um, who we are or, or whether it's put, it's put on. Uh, I know that there are people that believe that social and emotional learning somehow popped up yesterday. I'm, um, I was so sad to see a former professor of mine pass away, um, in the last few weeks, Dr. Roger Weisberg, who, um, taught me back when, when I was young and some of you were either younger or you weren't. And, um, um, he had us in the New Haven Public Schools doing a forerunner of social and emotional learning 40 years ago. It's not newfangled, uh, it's decades old. It's not extraordinary, it's integral to, uh, to education. Um, it's not urban education, i- it's suburban, it's rural, it's across the state. You point out, um, that, um, you're not in the Lansing metro area. You're not in a city, you're in a rural jurisdiction up north. This is important to you. I was just in the Western UP, I heard the same thing. People recognize that, that we have to be about not simply meeting academic needs of children, but also all sorts of other needs, including social and emotional needs as, as well. Children come to us with a variety of needs. We have a responsibility to tend to those lest we, uh, are impeded in our ability to teach them the academics. Not to say that the academics are important, but, um, but the other, um, the other needs of our young people have to be addressed as well. I would just like to, if I could, Mr. McMillan, and, and then I'll, I'll turn it over to you. The only thing that I'd like, I, I'd, I'd be cautious about is, um, this, um, sort of revisionist Maslowian look that, um, until we tend to our children's basic needs, we can't tend to higher-order needs. Um, and particularly for those of us, Ms. Hook, who, who work with poor kids on a, on a regular basis, we need to tend to those basic needs and those higher-order needs, not consecutively, but rather concurrently, because we're just not going to have the luxury of curing poverty before we teach our young people. It is in fact, in part, our teaching that will give our young people a chance to, to move beyond the, the poverty. So sometimes you hear Maslow being referenced as, you got to deal with the, the, the more basic before you deal with the higher order. And I think it's more a concurrent than a, than a consecutiveness. But it's just a, y- you know, I, I'm, I'm always worried when Abraham Maslow walks back into a conversation and we're talking about not teaching kids until we, we address their, um, their, their basic needs, which I don't think was your point, but sometimes, you know, you hear wisps of that. Um, so appreciative of you working on all of the needs of your, your young people and, and not just discreet ones. Uh, thank you. Mr. McMillan?
Yeah, I appreciate your presentation. I guess, uh, social emotional learning, I've, uh, been a critic or cautious about it for many years and we've seen it play out in areas like, uh, kids get question, questionnaires about, how often do your parents argue? How often do you disagree with your parents? How often, all these attitudes and beliefs and it really can move into that. And even when we're talking about, you know, being honest and taking risks, well, you know, maybe some things, you know, you're not supposed to talk about, about what goes on at home. Or I remember back in the nineties, there was a push, tell us if your parents have alcohol. What kind of alcohol do they have in their, you know, in their cupboards? And, you know, I mean, not, that was back then, but I mean, just there's, you know, there's a, a line, or is there a line, or do you see a line where, you know, you got to be careful about authentic and vol-, you know, getting kids, a lot of times, these are like, you know, some people say it's armchair psychology, like, you know, this is not, you got to be careful in these areas as well. Uh, do you think there's a line? Do you kind of feel like, you know, I, you know?
So, um, just to clarify with, with being honest and taking risk, what I, what I meant by that was that they do that in their learning and that we use that, like, when I say I was being, when I'm being vulnerable, that I talk and own my own mistakes and we talk about how we grow from those things. I mean, of course, there are moments where, um, if something that we have to discuss is something that is a tragic loss, like we had a student pass away in our building two years ago before the pandemic and we had to tell all of our students that. And so, you know, showing vulnerability of being sad and knowing how to navigate that you don't have all the answers is a way to model that for kids to understand that. So I, I, I hear what you're saying, but I'm, I don't myself experience those pieces as I'm navigating social emotional learning. A lot of what I was referencing in this particular presentation was the idea that we are building the capacity to, no matter how we walk in from our day or how our day started, that we are a community of learners that is going to help regulate ourselves and know how to have strategies to do that in order to be present in our learning day and be able to take risks in our learning. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and, and to speak on that as well, um, moving into a middle school perspective, it is much harder for them to take academic risks, to have a, a child raise their hand with the possibility of being incorrect and experiencing embarrassment, um, um, or shame from that. So building that relationship in that classroom community provides them the knowing that even if I say something incorrect or I don't get an answer correct, my classmates are not going to shame me or make me feel embarrassed because of that.
That actually is really important. That's a, a, a part of the fourth, uh, social and emotional learning competency, that, that, that issue of, um, of relationship to others. And it's particularly important as kids get older. You, you don't see this as much with the little ones, you know, pre-K, K one, two. As they get into upper L and middle school, that mockery starts coming and it can really, uh, chill out children, um, in the worst sense of the term, from participating. And what we know about education is, is that you really have to take risks in order to, to do the best, to self-actualize. Uh, kids have to put themselves out there, which inevitably entails making mistakes. I used to tell my kids when I taught high school French in DC, I've made more mistakes in the French language than all of you combined and at the end of the school year, that still will be the case. That's not bad or good, it's just real. That's a part of learning the language. You're going to make mistakes and if you want to become strong, you're going to, you're going to put yourself in that position to, to, uh, to try language, to make mistakes, to correct that language, to keep improving a- as a rule. People can't, can't help you with your language if they never hear your language, if they never see your language. So I, I do think that there's some value to that. We have a couple of people on, a couple of board members who are remote, uh, Mr. Strayhorn and then Ms. Snyder.
Uh, thank you. I just want to, you know, first of all, thank you for that presentation. I think it was wonderful. It was outstanding. For me, because we know like division, fear, mongering, hate, those, those are learned behaviors. And for you to be so intentional about the, teaching the children diversity, equity, religious differences and, and triggering those introspective looks into each of the children's selves by being authentic and vulnerable, I, I think that's such a critical key component to what you've just told everyone here today. I, I, the respect, um, that, that's being taught- I, I respect that, that's being taught systematically across your districts. And I hope that, you know, most, you know, people who are other, other educators across the state can use this as a model. This is beautiful for, for children from the social, emotional learning behavior side of things. I think that's, it's so important because, you know, as you said, I mean, this quote that you have up still with Pam Leo about, you know, you know, we're going to spend the time either way. And a lot of, a lot of the issues we have are results of children acting out because they aren't able to have these discussions and understand differences that we all have. And I think this will trigger a better tomorrow for not just the children, but for our society. So I thank you for this.
Thank you, Mr. Strayhorn. Ms. Snyder?
I'll just, um, I'll echo a couple of things that others have said, but, and I just do a little plug-in for one of my favorite teachers who did very much through relationship encourage me to take big risks. It was in the choir room. So when I first met her in sixth grade, there were just things going on. And unmet needs is a reality of every individual that lives life, right? This is just something that we, that is inherent to humanity, unmet needs. So when we go to school, if, if we need to have those relationships with teachers, which we do, which help us to access education and academics, we need to be careful about what that means. So I, I do appreciate what Tom had to say, I appreciate the concept of authenticity and relationship being the focus in order to take those risks and to grow. Because the only other option is to essentially be, you know, debilitated by the impact of those unmet needs, right? Or to struggle to get there, take longer, or, or cover less ground, if you will. I just really caution all of this movement. What I find with my kids now is that relationship is harder to come by, but political narratives, information about medical information and in-school social information, the focus on these few things and what they're being bombarded with is actually taking up way more space and making it harder for these kids to have those relationships that I had with Mrs. Green in, in her office in ways that, I mean, truly, she did transform so much of, of my life at that age, which was a really trying time. So just from the perspective of knowing what you guys are talking about and totally agreeing with where you're coming from, I still caution, just collectively speaking, I think there's, there are things in the way taking up that space for teachers and in education generally speaking. So it's, it's a nod, it's also a caution, and, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Other board members' reflections? Once, twice, thrice, and now you are out of the hot seat. Thank you very much, Teachers of the Year, we appreciate you. Thank you.
Just close us out. You're welcome.
Next item on today's agenda is approval of nominations to the Special Education Advisory Committee. The board is being asked to approve nominations to CAC. CAC is seeking to fill the following vacancies: three delegates, three alternate, uh, three alternates, five ex officio members, and four members-at-large due to expired or incomplete terms. The board is being asked to approve the nominations during today's meeting. Presenters are Dr. Scott Kennick-Schneck, who enjoys doing these presentations, Director of the Office of Special Education, and Ms. Terry Pettit, twins of a sort, facilitators of the Special Education Advisory Committee Office of Special Education. Gentle people, we will, we will hear a presentation. We will then have a motion to approve the recommendations, the second. Any discussion thereof, roll forward like that. Floor is yours. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rice, and thank you, the State Board, for allowing us some time to come before you this afternoon. So as Dr. Rice said, we are here to seek approval for nominations for CAC. We do this on a yearly basis. As Dr. Rice said, we are looking to fill vacancies for three delegates, three alternates, five ex officio members, and four members-at-large. You received information ahead of time. You have, attachment A in your document lists the organizations that are currently represented on CAC. Attachment B lists the names of the individuals nominated with some of information regarding them. You also then received biographical resumes of those that are nominated. We also provided you in a board brief the opportunity to nominate individuals yourself. So you received that board brief on September 17th, because there's a board you can certainly nominate, folks, we welcome that. We did not receive any nominations via that. So with that, I would ask for approval at this point.
Well, that was one of the more succinct presentations I've heard in front of this, uh, this, this board.
You asked for brevity this morning, Dr. Rice, and I'm, I'm keeping with that theme.
I wasn't sure anybody was listening, Dr. Kennick-Schneck. Uh, Dr. Pritchett, do you have a motion?
Yes, I'll move.
Okay, do we have a second?
Uh, sorry.
Uh, we, we've got support from Mr. McMillan, we've got a third from Dr. Albridge, and I imagine we might have a fourth if we kept going. Is there any discussion? President Albridge?
You said we received biographical, I don't.
Attachment, attachment C on the board, I have.
Attachment C is a one-page informational
Let's see.
of the nominees.
Oh, okay, so that's what you're referring to?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Um, in the past, I remember we used to get more demographic information so we could make sure that there was a diverse representation of folks on CAC. I don't see that.
So I can speak to the work around diversity. This was brought up last year, and CAC has done a tremendous amount of work. I'll ask Terry to speak about the specifics shortly. But in their annual report, they've been, they spent the year talking a great deal about diversity. There are four pages in their annual report that talks about the group actions and then individual actions that they either have or will take regarding marketing, other demographic considerations, organizational considerations, the platform, and miscellaneous considerations. There's been a great deal of work around that. In terms of the submission and the documents, I guess I'll kick that to Terry. And Terry has the demographic information in the annual report as well, Dr. Albridge, so.
Yes, there is a lot of information in that annual report, and I just forwarded that on to Mertz so she could share it with you. What you'll see is the accessible version, and I also sent her two inaccessible versions that are prettier, the things that CAC created for internal use.
So accessible via ADA for the web, yeah.
Yep, yep. So with these, these folks that applied this time, we were very intentional. We had talked all year long about diversity. We talked about how we were going to apply it, who we were going to seek out. We reached out, I know Terry went and spoke to parent organizations. We really tried to, to broaden that whole idea of diversity. And I can tell you, out of the, the people that you have received, three of those were men that, that were asking for the approval for, so that was good. Two of them actually speak and write in Spanish, and that's something we've never had before. There were, out of the 13 disability areas, we have seven of those that were covered this time, and three are actual members, and the rest were their children. We have, all of these races have joined us. We had one African-American, one American Indian, one Pacific Islander, one Southwest Asian, and one Hispanic. So that's broader as well. So our, in our ISD distribution, we look at that as well because we want to make sure that we've got people from all over the state. We have rural, we have city, we want to just make sure we're getting that smattering. And we have 11 ISDs that were represented in those people that you saw. So from my time with CAC, this is absolutely the most diverse group we've ever been able to send to you. We do still have a stack of white women that have applied, but we are asking that the board really consider, we have two more openings. We have one member-at-large defined, and a defined member is somebody who either has a disability themselves or they have a child with a disability. So we would like to find one member-at-large defined, and we would also need one member-at-large defined but in reserve. Because we have alternates and we have delegates, and the alternates can always vote in place of delegates, but we've never had that voice for parents. So our person in reserve would be the person that could vote if a parent were absent. So I, I ask the board, we would love to broaden this diversity a little bit more. I know I reached out to Mertz earlier today, I'd like to contact Lupe because she probably has some good contacts where she is. If you know of somebody that's interested in being a part of CAC that represents a diverse population that we're still trying to get to, we would love for them to apply. You could, they could either contact me, or our application is on our website, which is on the state's website. So I, we kept those two places open intentionally, hoping that, that you folks will know somebody that might be a good fit for us. So I think we're finally getting there with diversity.
I love that. Thank you so much. And, and I also saw, Leah, that you are on this list, so thank you for agreeing to serve as well.
I'm so excited. I've already been to two meetings and it's fabulous. So yes, I'm very honored to be able to be a part of it.
Thank you.
That's a good thing. And the, and the point of the diversity is to represent our entire student body across the state.
Absolutely.
Right, thank you. Ms. Snyder, to you.
Yes, I just have a question. Did anybody apply and not, not get accepted for approval today, at today's meeting?
We have a, like I mentioned, we have a, a stack of applicants that we, as, we have an executive committee. So our executive committee, in keeping with, we have to have 51% of our membership has to be defined. That's federal regulation. So we wanted to make sure that we were meeting that and then a number of other diversity areas that we're looking at. So what we did was we took all of our nominations and went to our executive committee, and they in turn decided which people we wanted to recommend to the board. So the people that you got today are the ones that the executive committee has forwarded on to you. And as I mentioned, we still have a small stack of people that did apply and are very interested and are all very qualified, but they don't necessarily meet the diversity that we're seeking.
So are there positions that will remain open, then?
There are two positions currently. The federal regulation says we have to have 51% of our membership being defined members. And we are actually, right now, as of today, at 68%. And this is the first time we've had such a large group. I'm really excited about having 68% of our members being in that defined group.
Okay.
And we also wanted to, we were hoping that the board could find a couple more people that they thought would be a good fit, because I think your, your input is just as important as our just reaching out to ISDs. I, I'd love to have the state board's input on those last two seats that we have open. And if we don't get that, then you'll see other people come to you to be approved at a later time.
Right, and the board was asked a few weeks ago about this. And is periodically asked about, about this. But your committee sifts through applicants and makes determinations of who, whom you're going to nominate to the full board?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Ms. Snyder, anything else? No? Okay, very good. Other board members? Hearing and seeing none? Uh, I believe that we have a motion on the table, we have a second, we've had discussion. Marilyn, if you'd be kind enough to do a roll call vote, please.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Strayhorn?
Yes.
Tilly?
Yes.
Albridge?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, presenters, we appreciate the, the recommendations and the presentation. Next item on today's agenda is the state and federal legislative update. Marty Ackley, Director of the Office of Public and Governmental Affairs, will lead the state and federal legislative update. And SBE Legislative Committee met on September 30th, 2021. You'll share, then we'll pivot to Ms. Lipton, our chairwoman, and then finally, Dr. Pritchett on the, the NASB report.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. The Michigan House and Senate had session today, but no attendance or voting was, was taken. Many members were given the opportunity to attend the funeral of Representative Andrea Schrader-Clarkston, who passed away on October 1st. But several bills are moving, or have moved through the legislature recently. One is Senate Bill 664, which provides flexibility in pupil accounting to account for changes as a result of quarantining. That bill moved quickly through the Senate Committee and was adopted, was passed by the Senate, and is now over in the House. Another bill, Senate Bill 645, allows for PSA's charter schools to give enrollment priority to students who were enrolled previously in the PSA, but because of the pandemic, they may have been out. So it allows them to have priority getting back into the PSA. Another bill, House Bill 4199, would do away with the Labor Day start date. So that bill is, came out of the House Committee on Education, referred to the floor of the, of the House. There are two bills that were mentioned earlier in public comment. House Bill 5097 and, and Senate Bill 460. 460 is the Critical Race Theory Bill, and House Bill 5097 is the one that deals with race and gender stereotyping. The House bill passed out of the House Education Committee on a partisan vote, is on second reading on the floor. The Critical Race Theory Bill received testimony in the Senate Education and Career Readiness Committee. No action was taken, but to address a point that was made during public comment, the Michigan Department of Education has submitted cards of opposition on both those bills. And then there's a four-bill package, the anti-vaccination, anti-face mask, and anti-emergency order bills that are in the Senate. They were reported out of Education, Committee on Education and Career Readiness, and are on the floor of the Senate. To, to get to something that Dr. Rice mentioned this morning regarding teacher shortage and the need to possibly do some loan forgiveness. There was a bill introduced last week in the Senate, Senate Bill 673, that would provide for loan forgiveness payments. It's called the Excellence in Education Act. It would provide for payments, loan forgiveness or loan payments to teachers to the amount of up to $20,000. It was referred to the Senate Appropriations Committee, no hearings as of yet. Of course, it's subject to appropriation, there's no money in it. But that's a vehicle, that's a bill that is in the process now, and hopefully that's something that can be addressed quickly. So that's really the legislation that's moving, and I will now defer to Ms. Lipton to talk about the State Board of Education Legislative Committee meeting on the 30th of September.
Thank you, Mr. Ackley, for your report. And just to note that we are working, the department is working with the Senate or worked with the Senate on Senate Bill 664 on pupil accounting, because there are a number of things that need to be strengthened in that regard. Each year the legislature passes pupil accounting law, the department is responsible for enforcing that law. Sometimes we find it wanting, and go back to the legislature for legislative fixes to it. Thank you very much. Chairwoman, Lipton?
Yes, thank you. We did meet on the 30th and had a number of items up for discussion. I'll begin with our discussion regarding the need to engage the legislature on the issue of properly counting students who may be out because of COVID or quarantining. And that's something that we, we took up because of the fact that we are now in a, the month of count day. Not mistaken, I believe we've passed count day. So we did, we just did discuss that, and we are go, and we are, you know, we are monitoring that, and the department is working very diligently on getting those legislative fixes as a matter of priority. We also discussed very briefly the president's vaccine requirements or the, the, what, what may be requirements for employees of organizations with more than 100 employees. The department will continue to monitor- The department will continue to monitor that. Right now, we do not have any clarity on how that will, or if that will be rolled out, if that will affect school districts or not. And so the department will be monitoring that and we will perhaps discuss that again if necessary at the next legislative committee meeting. I won't belabor Mr. Ackley's discussion on the two bills dealing with curriculum in terms of either Critical Race Theory or the House bill, which speaks more in generalities. He's provided the update to the full, full board. We did, we did discuss that in our legislative committee. The last two items I would like to hone in on is we did discuss and we will continue to discuss two issues that, that are really very important for the department. The first one is an issue of a MDE employees are not currently in MIPSers. And there may, there may be a, a need to work on a legislative fix to, to allow for a choice of retirement systems. We did have a discussion about anytime dealing with MIPSers. It is fraught with a lot of potential problems. It makes people very nervous. And so the department is going to be exploring with many of our partners in terms of whether or not this is something that is, is feasible. So that's something that is going to require quite a bit of work and that's something that, as the committee, will be continuing to work, work on that. And lastly, we discussed the issue of training. Right now, there is a bill that I believe, I don't know if it's been reintroduced, but it was introduced last session, dealing with voluntary school board member training. But we also had a lengthy discussion about the, the need for stronger language on superintendent mentoring, new principal mentoring and new teacher mentoring. New teacher mentoring is something that the, that is somewhat in statute, but we did have a discussion about possibly strengthening it and working with the legislature. But we, we do not have a format for superintendent mentoring in the state and it may be something that it's, it's time we thought about. So those are the things that we discussed. We did not pass any resolutions to bring to the full board, but these are the issues that we discussed and will continue to discuss at our continuing meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairwoman Lipton. And just, just to note that we do think that teacher mentoring can be strengthened in the state, both statutorily and on the ground in individual school districts. The, the school board member training, voluntary, that you referenced, did in fact pass. And while we appreciate voluntary training, we do think that, that everyone in this important new role needs some training, as you, as you point out. There's literally nothing in statute around superintendent or principal mentoring, although there is some informal mentoring that takes place, both from the associations and within individual school districts. So this is an area where collectively, as a profession, we need to improve in the training and mentoring of our leaders, our teachers, our principals, our superintendents, our school board members. Thank you for sharing that. Really appreciate the, the report. To Dr. Pritchett.
Thank you. Short report. I too was able to attend virtually the NASB Policy Conference. And certainly the highlight was Michelle Fecto receiving her Distinguished Service Award. But also a highlight earlier in the conference was Dr. Timothy Shriver, who is the chairperson or president of the Special Olympics Association, did a session with this year's National Teacher of the Year. Not as good as Leah and our regional teachers, but no, she was excellent. The two of them did a session just on leadership and Dr. Shriver in particular referenced James Comer, who, if you're not familiar with James Comer's work, deals with the whole child Harlem Project, et cetera. So I was able to hear Secretary Cordova, of course, during one of the sessions also, but it was well done. It amazes me on how you can do a whole conference virtually and they pretty much held it together. So, but by far, Michelle's speech was very, very well done. She thanked everybody and took no credit herself, which is typical of Michelle. So, and that's all I have.
Thank you very much, Dr. Pritchett. Any questions for any of our three presenters or two and a half presenters, as Mr. Ackley has bolted from the hot seat? Any, any, yes?
This is Pamela, real quickly, on the phone. I did, I know that I missed the conversation this morning regarding the, the, what Tom had put, put forward. I do want to continue on with the conversation that was started last month and willing to put that before the legislative committee for us to take up, but I do think that it is an urgent matter for us to discuss those issues that were presented. Actually, I, I sent it over this morning in, in an email that were in response to Tom's proposed resolution, but I think that it follows up on the conversation that we began last meeting and that's really speaking again to, to mask mandates, to vaccination, to the president's mandate for vaccination of workers as well as testing in school. I do want to make sure I bring that to everyone's attention. So I do want, want to make sure that that's noted and that we're able to, to hopefully vote on that next, next meeting.
Okay. Thank you very much, Dr. Pugh. I appreciate that. Ms. Snyder, hand in the chat.
Just a couple of questions about superintendent mentoring. How many school districts are, are, are not mentoring their superintendents currently?
We, we have no record of that. There's nothing collected on superintendent mentoring that I know of in the state. There are 830 LEAs, approximately 300 PSAs, approximately 530 traditional public school districts. MASA began a voluntary mentoring program a few years ago. We're very much appreciative of that and supportive of that effort. That's a good effort. But feeling of a number of us, myself particularly, is that new superintendent mentoring is important. And I mean not simply you're new, new, that is to say you're new to the superintendency, but also you could be new to the Michigan superintendency. I'm reminded that when I was a new superintendent in New Jersey for my first superintendency, my mentor was not only mentoring me, but a superintendent who had been a superintendent in California. He was being mentored because he was new to the New Jersey superintendency. And though there are similarities across states, there are also differences. And he felt the superintendent that had been a California superintendent, that was a new New Jersey superintendent, he felt that there was a value to the requirement. He had been opposed to it when he heard about it. When he got into the New Jersey superintendency, he realized that they were not all created equal and that there was a value to that mentoring in the new state.
So a couple of things. Who did you say started a voluntary mentoring program?
MASA, the Superintendents Association.
And then I think it would be a really good idea, before we talk, as if it should be a mandate, precisely what school districts are doing. Again, back to, you know, concepts of local control and how would you, I mean, would this mandate then need to be funded? It, it just struck me after our meeting this last month that I can't imagine that mentoring was, is not something that schools do, even if they need to be helped along by a voluntary program. It just, it's interesting to, to hear that it's, that it's like, in this day and age, that it's like something that's not done in, in, I'm, I'm just, I'm a little bit taken back by that.
Yeah, no, I understand. But I've been in the profession, been in the superintendency for 20 years and school administration for almost 30 and, and this is where it is. It, it, there, there are some states that mandate it, but most don't. And the reality is, is that these are people who often are not trained to be superintendents. They may be intelligent, they, they're absolutely hardworking, they're well intentioned, but they, but they need to be mentored in the, in the new role. And I might add, I think that's the case for, for all of us in new roles. It's not so much the superintendency, although I do think that's an important role, but I think it's the case for principals in new principalships, the new board members, new teachers. Again, it's not about any individual human being or any individual profession, but rather the need to learn the profession.
Sure. But again, I'm not sure, how many school districts are not doing that? It's just, again, is it really not something that's happening?
It is something, it is, it is, it is something that is often not happening. When, when I speak to new superintendents, we do a new superintendent's training or two each year. It's in the fall each year. And one of the things that I say to new superintendents is, is that in this state, there is no requirement to be mentored. I'm telling you as someone who's been in this for a couple of decades, that you need to be mentored. And if you feel you don't, you need to be mentored more, not less. So you know, your lack of consciousness of your need to be mentored is a, is a symptom of your need to be mentored. And it's not to break people down, it's just a very, very different job. You know, a lot of us have been...
Hire someone that doesn't think they need to be mentored.
Well, yeah, I know. It's a, it's a great question. But you, you, you hire people who, who you think can do the job. And of course, in, in many cases, they can, but they can do it better if they're brought along. And you know, who mentors you is a little bit of an art form, right? So, so there may be someone who, who mentors one person brilliantly and the next person can't connect to that, that individual. So there, you know, there are questions about, I, I mean, I know that particular people would prefer to be mentored by particular people, sometimes same gender, sometimes cross gender. I, I know that, for example, urban superintendents often like to be mentored by other urban superintendents, rural by other rural superintendents. There's a feeling that, you know, you don't precisely understand my rural, my, my ruralness or my urban-ness or my suburban-ness from your vista. So there, there, there's all of, all of that. But you know, again, it's not a denigration, it's more a way of lifting people up.
Understood.
Yeah. Thank you. Anything else? Going once, twice, thrice?
Dr. Rice?
Yes.
I know that Marty, I know that Marty mentioned the CRT bill and that's the other thing that I would hope that, I'm not sure if the Policy Committee took that up, but if we, if we're looking at doing a resolution related to CRT. So I, I don't think that we've, we've done that yet. I think we talked about that last month as well and I don't know if the committee said any, said about, anything about that that I missed.
Dr. Pugh, I, I see Chairwoman Lipton and Mr. Ackley taking mental notes. I can see the gears going on in their, in their heads. And we will add both your resolution and the CRT bills for discussion at our next legislative committee meeting. Ms. Snyder, is your, Ms. I'm, I'm sorry, Dr. Pugh, were you done?
Yes, that was, that's a thank you.
Okay, you bet. Ms. Snyder, is, is your hand still up or is it up again?
It is officially down.
It is down? Okay. All right. Note, note to self, optometrist appointment soon. Other, other questions, comments, concerns? No? Marty Ackley, you are off the hot seat. We appreciate it. And you? Comments by State Board of Education members? Are there board members who wish to offer comments? Mr. McMillan?
I would encourage Dr. Rice, when you're giving your educational update regard, related to COVID-19, you're giving all your statistics, you might want to include natural immunity. We have, well, we have 1.2 million cases, 23,000 deaths, so I mean, at least 1.1 million, I guess some might have gotten it more than once. So we've got, you know, maybe a million or so people who, according to an Israeli study of 2.5 million patients recently, these, natural immunity is seven times more likely or less likely to be infected with COVID than those who are vaccinated fully. So, you know, they, they are, you know, even, even more immune and, and safe and yet I think it's absurd that some people want to have them get vaccinated as well or, they already are seven times better off or less likely to be infected than fully vaccinated folks. But I think that's an important thing that looks like probably a million people or so here in Michigan that have even better immunity, way better than fully vaccinated people. Second, just, I think it's important that we keep in mind relative risk. I was looking on the COVID state website and according to that, kids or people zero to 19 are twice or maybe three times less likely to die than, of COVID than those in, of the same age in a car accident. I found a website, World Life Expectancy, that had Michigan data that broke it down by age. I haven't been able to find that before. So it's, it's, they are way less likely and we don't have any problem putting kids in cars and we don't, yes, we buckle them, but this is even considering they get buckled. They still are way, way more likely to die in a car accident. Third, it was mentioned, I wasn't able to reply, but road rage, because there might have been an incident of road rage, we now are supposed to call in the FBI. And I can assure you that locals can take care of road rage. I believe they take care of it probably in Saginaw and Detroit and other parts and, and Northern Oakland County and, and many places throughout the state of Michigan without calling in the FBI. And I certainly wouldn't want the FBI called in those locations. And I'm sure road rage is probably worse than, than the incidences found after a, a school board meeting. So just wanted to say that I still just can't, I can't even believe somebody would defend the idea of, of calling in the FBI over, well, against parents. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Tilly?
Thank you. Can you guys hear me good?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Yesterday was a very important holiday, a very important federal holiday. So let me start by saying Happy Indigenous Peoples' Day. Definitely, definitely wanted to acknowledge that. After listening for months to our, to the arguments on CRT, I am in full support of CRT within the social studies curriculum. The arguments against CRT are very concerning, especially when it comes to diversity. Many comments have been biased, one-sided, and some are just racist. There are times I feel as if I am going to be propelled back into the 1950s where segregation laws will be reenacted and I will be escorted. laws will be reenacted and I will be escorted off of the State Board of Education along with some of my colleagues. It is unbelievable that we are still having these conversations in 2021 and that so many people are closed-minded. I am deeply saddened to hear the continuous pushback on diversity. This country was built on the foundation of freedom for all. We need to demand that. America is a melting pot and people are still stuck in the dark ages pushing ideologies as if it is just for white, straight Christians. That ship has sailed. As much as people talk about people having rights and having a voice at this table, those same people seem to forget that all people, not just people that look like them, deserve rights. Basic human rights and inclusion does not just belong to one group of people. Schools have taught the subject of slavery for as long as I can remember. Parents have not pushed for it to be removed from the curriculum so it can be taught at home. Yet they are pushing for the continuation of a rewritten history where whites are heroes for the atrocities committed against Africans, African-Americans, and Native Americans for centuries. If we are going to teach lessons on slavery, it is only reasonable and logical to teach that slave owners were oppressors. Because you cannot have slaves without having evil, ill-willed people who enslaved them and others who supported this practice. These people are in fact called oppressors because they had the ability to exploit or systematically harm others. If teaching students that they were oppressors is shameful, it stands to reason that teaching students that they were slaves is shameful as well. The truth is that this is an emotional subject that should be taught with historical facts without making any child feel ashamed. These facts should be taught with honesty, but also sensitivity. All students should understand this is a part of our past with the goal of enriching their educational experience and embracing diversity to improve our future for the stability of this nation. Slavery of any form is wrong and that is what we should teach our children. If this was a discussion on sex trafficking, I believe that we would all be on the same page that sex trafficking is a form of slavery that is evil and those who harm others in this way are wrong. Slaves were captured, sold, beaten, forced to work against their will under harsh conditions, and at times raped. Not teaching our children that these people were wrong and evil is a disservice to them. Teaching them empathy and sensitivity is a major part of character development and that is what CRT can promote. At this point, I believe it is critical. The opposition of diversity and exposing the truth in order to heal, improve race relations, and forge a more equitable society is strategically upholding the social constructs of racism. If CRT can move us closer to destroying those constructs and dividing lines, I am all for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tilly. Any other board members? Ms. Snyder, did you, I guess you had your hand up?
Okay, before I, I'm gonna take it down now. There. Um, I had a couple of things to say, but I will just, you know, respond a little bit to Finney. I'm very much in support of teaching slavery and I don't know anybody who is not in support of teaching the historical reality of slavery. At some point in time, I figured I would read what critical race theory is, the actual definition of it. And this comes from the introductory, the introduction of it. And I think it's important for people to hear this so they understand the differences between the fact that most of us agree that history needs to be taught, there's no doubt about that. But when you hear this definition, you understand the key words that are associated with racial equity, you understand how they're taught. That division, that chaos is not, it's not okay to use it to essentially wield political power within classrooms. So, you know, critical race theory. The critical race theory movement considers many of the same issues that conventional civil rights and ethnic studies take up, which most of us agree on, but places them in a broader perspective that includes economics, history, and even feelings and the unconsciousness. Unlike traditional civil rights, which embraces incrementalism and step-by-step progress, critical race theory questions the very foundations of the liberal order, including equality theory, legal reasoning, enlightenment, rationalism, and principles of constitutional law. Those last several things, it, it's exactly what you said, destruction. We don't need destruction of our country to restore and heal. And I'll leave it at that because there's plenty of time in the coming months and years to figure out what that means and looks like. I just wanted to say that this meeting today was probably the first shift in focus where we didn't spend as much time discussing some of the things that have divided us the way they have in the last 18 months. I, I loved the, the, I loved the classroom, the access to the classroom we had in the meeting and the teacher of the year and regional teacher of the year, the information that they had to offer. Mostly it was just very good and I appreciate that. There was something that did come out, and I, I do just want to share this with, with everyone, just from the perspective of children and hearing children speak about COVID, the pandemic. And, and I thought about it when we were talking from the teacher of the year perspective, when we were speaking about awareness, self-awareness. And Michael, you kind of expanded on what is real, right? Kids, kids have a concept of what is real, whether we, whether we're doing a very good job of performing or not, whether we are performing or not, right? My daughter recently grabbed this box of masks and she said, "Mom." "What, Levi?" She said, "Hey, you know, why does it say this?" And on this box of masks, it says, "Do not use in a setting where there is infection risk through inhalation or as a respiratory protective device." She said, "Why would it say that on a box of face masks when we're supposed to? They're mandating we wear this as protection." And he said, "Well, oftentimes, that's what we find when people disagree on the application of things or the interpretation of things, this is what comes about." So what I will remind everyone as we continue to move forward is, what is real, kids see that, right? My son had a soccer game and he knew that, you know, in the past 18 months, they were allowed to clap for each other at the end of the game. And yet, our school district has a mask mandate and they, they repeatedly report on new, new cases and different things, but they're shaking hands at the end of games. He said, "Why, why would we do that?" And one thing I can say is, at the end of the day, what is real, it's palpable, it's observed. Kids really, they really do see what is real and the truth does ultimately prevail. So all the things we talk about today, like teacher shortage, all the things that we've talked about are important things, but they will listen to the people that are consistent and who tell the truth. They will listen to the people that are real. And, and I think that that is something to consider. And I will, I will leave it at that for today.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. We've got, Ms. Tilly noted in the, in the chat that she appreciates your source. And I, I know that President Albridge said that as well. So maybe if you could just shoot that to us via, via email. Do the other, do the remaining board members who have not offered comments have any to offer at this time?
This is Pamela.
Yes.
And I just wanted to say a few things. Number one, I am actually here in Scotland and honored to be about a part of the TED Countdown where we're talking ahead of the COP26 meeting, the Conference of Parties, talking climate change. And tomorrow, I will be a part of a session where we'll talk about climate change and racial justice and it will be focused on the US. And so honored to be a part of that and to be here. I also, along with being able to see Michelle get her well-deserved trophy or plaque or honor her and, and be recognized for her work in education, I was able to speak at the NASP conference and we talked about lead in school water. So honored to be able to do that. The other thing that I did do, didn't want to, but I felt that it was necessary, I did go to Lansing and I did speak in opposition of Senate Bill 460, which would penalize and require for school districts to be hunted down and funding to be taken away from children if racial, talking about race relations, talking about historical factors that are true and, and how African-Americans arrived in this country and talking about the consequences of slavery. And so I did speak in opposition of that. And again, I, I do hope that we will soon take up a resolution that would speak against that. To Tiffany's point, Tiffany, I, I heard that loud and clear, I do know that if you do have a bill out there that is threatening to take away funding from school districts, you're not going to, the teachers are gonna be confused. I don't want to just say they're gonna be confused. I mean, it's the, the, the point or the intent or the, the conclusion of the matter will be that, that we will have districts that will not teach this history. The other piece, so I just wanted, wanted to, to mention that. And I guess I'll, I'll stop right there. You know, and I usually try to correct misinformation because there are usually people who are listening. I know that that causes angst and anxiety, but I do think that when inaccurate information goes across, it should be countered. And I'll just leave that, that there. And I will see everybody next month.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Good luck tomorrow.
Thank you.
Are there, are there any other board members who, who have not had the offer, opportunity to offer comments at the end of the board meeting and would like to do so? Dr. Pritchett?
Thank you. I just want to again thank the children this morning for opening our meeting. I concur with many of you and appreciate Nikki's remarks, the tone of this meeting. And I'm gonna give all the credit to the children and none to the adults, because that's what I do, is certainly more professional and more positive than what we've had in the past. And so I appreciate that and I think it's a goal to continue to keep working towards. Thank you for the presentations, lots of good information. And thank you to CAC, a great organization. I know Ellen and I were able to pop in for about five, 10 minutes this past month and it's always good to connect with CAC. So, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Three more board members who have yet to share. If you don't want to, that's all good. But I want to make sure that I've made the offer. One, two, three, and three, two, one. Future meeting dates are Tuesday, November 9th, Tuesday, December 14th, Tuesday, January 11th. They are all at 9:30, they are all regular meetings. If there are any topics that board members would like considered for future meeting agendas, please notify Marilyn or me. Time is 3:17 PM, board. Let no one say that we don't give you something-